So it's what they they would like? Okay. Chater.
Okay.
Yeah. Here.
Okay, Neil and Kim are showing us.
My GPS. Where are the ones under there? Saying right it is.
So people did that or you only sent it to them?
Yeah, sent it to me again.
He must be your sponsor, which I know, right?
We just grabbed that.
Yeah. But it I don't really it's pulling them like not liable for anything no matter what happens.
The.
Sounds like to me.
The so then does it also go reverse? So if if somebody hit that?
Right, yeah, I don't.
That's what I was saying, just like, okay, well, one of our points they use in. It's.
This is to me, no, look at this line.
Yeah, I just liked your opinion.
Yeah. We don't have to, we haven't approved it yet.
No, we haven't.
Today's open, we need to put on the next.
Retail, I was leaving that up to Brad, he said once I respond, he's gonna have. I'll just.
Hey, Vince.
Thank you.
What's going on?
Um, is it still the same panel? But it's now it's going out, going back, going out.
Like turns off?
Yeah, but both of them, both of them gone.
Oh, in fact.
So it's gotta be affecting.
Oh, it did it again?
I flew down to Vegas, um. Working just fine, back down, it ain't working just fine, and then it blitzed, and so I flew it. Um, all the way down. Landed, next day jumped in it. And it wasn't, no, and then it started working, and then it worked the whole way home. This is me on.
We are on record now.
I know.
Oh.
Can you put that in the three minutes?
I'm so.
Good.
Well, I might watch it as I.
It's uh. It's not really.
Yeah, we have Kim, Chuck, and Neil all on Zoom ready to go. I don't have them up because I have the minutes on. And then the long from that changes in your face.
Yeah. I can learn tonight even that was yesterday.
But. You guys here?
Oh, yeah.
On Zoom? Everyone's here, so now? Maybe not, but I'm following. But I have.
So.
It's. We'll check this out.
Cause they they were. I'm pretty sure.
They showed the stuff.
Yeah, the runway two five lights need to be working.
Yeah, we put that in there, we've been working on that, trying to get somebody to come out of like on the lights. But overall, it was really just.
Why can't.
Was it say unable to activate rail lights on both ends of the run runway? What does that mean? Yeah. We don't have runway lights, do we? There's supposed to be white flashing ones, but do they do they exist?
No, they're there.
They're there, are they? Oh, okay.
I'm just gonna find somebody that can work on it.
Which I've been looking. So Babouz Devine, Hank's electric, works on Vernal's Airport and stuff. I've got a hold of him, waiting for a call back.
And the Pappy on that end doesn't work either.
Yeah.
Two five.
We know that's the.
Yes, that's the order.
Okay, well, I'll call the board. Uh, airport board meeting for September eighteenth, um, do a roll call, I'm Colton Roberts, White Stansfield.
Vince Riley.
Kirby Wolfender.
JR Erd.
Oh, I guess I should say sunshine along.
Okay, um, we can go over the.
Is that it?
Oh.
If the blue light could against JR and the sunshine?
Yep.
That's it.
And you?
Uh, let's see, the now, minutes from last. Um. Are those are those that sunshine?
Those are it, sorry. Roughly just started getting stuff done and perhaps send those out, so well, the minutes are short, they all fit on that screen, which why I have a hold up.
Okay, we'll just come back to those in a second and then.
Okay, if you wanna be able to see Kim and Neil, I'm gonna have to take them out.
Yeah, let's go to, let's see, is anything else?
Should we need to approve the minutes?
If everybody here is flying with them, if they ran them, then all all motion.
We're just trying to.
This is the third special meeting last month, right?
Yes, the last meeting on September eighteenth.
No, it's the one item in the base.
Yeah, okay, all motion, per per.
Second.
On favor? Okay, uh, I guess now we can go to, um.
Just a follow up on that, the council bid, didn't we agree on eighteen cents?
Yes, hold on, I think about that.
Vernal didn't get ahold of them, and they're planning on like eighteen to twenty sixth. So we got to just be if you go already.
Uh, so the Vernal Airport Manager, Mr. Wittenless, he was interested in coming to an airport board meeting in the future. Would you guys be comfortable inviting him over?
Definitely, sure. I've met with him once in, um, just recently, and they're wondering if there's some synergy there that we could use him. And coordinate, you know, commercial flights and things like that as well, do some things to benefit Roosevelt. As far as maybe having a shuttle back and forth, uh, commercial flights from the land here, and just working together on trying to build both airports, maybe competing. I think it's a very good conversation.
Yeah, I think he's he's very interested in this report as well, so and and the and supposed to shame in in kind of creating that synergy in the basin, um, for the for the airports.
Neil, I see you're in your office as usual.
I'm always in a different office.
That's funny.
Yeah, we, I dropped the missionary off at the M P C today, so.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, number two for our name.
Excellent.
Mr. Regret on it, is he on short review?
Uh, uh, no, he's postponed his days.
Okay, what was, I guess we'll. Okay, I guess we'll start with item A.
And Kim, I have a little task in this, but you can also screen share whatever you'd like to do.
Me too.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm just, um, yeah, I'll screen share. If I, I like to be in control of.
Yeah, it's okay, you have a direct to your own.
We like you.
All right, so, um, this is what the state has on record for upcoming projects through twenty eight. Um, I do wanna point out, I said that in the, um, write out as well, this state fiscal year, there, um.
Can you zoom on that a little, Chipper? Thank you.
Too much. Um, this this is really twenty four, twenty twenty four, these two projects, they are slated for fiscal year twenty four, which we just entered with the, um. Uh, in in enter with the FAA, uh, and the bump to reverse for fiscal year twenty four for the FAA. Um, so these are really for twenty four. Uh, so another one of the projects we have, or items we have later tonight, this is payment preservation, uh, scope of work fees, um, pass order for your consideration, um, to send to city council. Um, if that is state funded, um, that's, um, something that I would very strongly recommend keeping on schedule and doing during the year, but we'll talk about that in a minute. Um, what I do want to talk about is, um, the the updates are gonna be due in the middle of November. For the five year updates that we do every every year, um, but I wanted to get the board's input on on this fencing project that we have slated here, uh, for twenty four design and the twenty five construction. Um, in in that we've been talking through the master plan with doing the property acquisition, and does it still make sense to do a fencing project? There, or it's do a fencing project, but it, you know, maybe not do the areas where, you know, you guys are looking to maybe purchase some property, um, that could be an option. I just wanted to get your guys' feel, um, a move and board on on what your you want your projects, i- if any projects this year. If you want to delay a year because we're still working on the master plan and putting the listed projects together for them, uh, as part of the master plan. Which, um, we will be putting together a twenty year plan, um, as part of a master plan, um, which could really jump us some things on too.
You know what I would say, Kim, my personal opinion, is one of the biggest concerns that I have. There is just the security on the ramp. And so if we could just figure out a way to secure the ramp, so that, you know, even with a gate that you have to have a code, uh, to go through. And then the rest of the, there's no real good access to the rest of the runway, other than right around the hangers and that parking area. So even if we phased it and said, let's do security right there on the ramp, and then we can postpone the fencing if we need to. Um, wait on the fencing until we figure out some of those land acquisitions, if we can do that, but it would really be simple. Right there where the black, where the airplane is, I don't know, who'd be out right there? So if you just basically fence that. Gate there, I think that would do wonders. That still secures it to a degree where people feel.
Okay. I mean, if I need to here, we need to kind of. So also, I mean, block off this area, you know, and we need to figure out how to keep access there though too.
Yeah.
Are you are you just talking about doing this little?
Um, maybe that little L, I mean, if we needed to run a little fencing from the corner of the building where the corner of the main hangar, yeah, straight south. Or some, yeah, something like that, so you couldn't get to the east unless you have it go, and the same thing on the west. So, yeah, just after that last hangar on the west, we ran a something like right there, then it would secure.
I would recommend a vehicle gate there, a manual vehicle gate.
Yeah, sure.
Cause I mean, this is still used for.
Yeah, cause it's called going through there too, and so maybe a gate there or something, or he could go around the other way, I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the minimal, the minimal thing that we can do to secure the the ramp, and then we can worry about the rest of the fence later. Then it doesn't change much.
Well, and then what, you know, here we've got some mismatched field fencing around on this side, um. And then, you know, you're talking about another access to the runway, which I agree, I I just one thing that I was gonna recommend is it's nice to have access to the runway near the ends in case you have a down airplane in this area.
Okay.
Um, you know, putting figuring out what where's a good spot, I don't think that's a good spot right there. Um, but maybe, you know, maybe it is over here, you know, maybe we include some fencing, you know, this this is this part's got some fencing, I think here maybe. And then maybe those little haywire after this corner. Um, you know, what if we went ahead and looked at doing the fencing around the perimeter? And then we could look and put in a vehicle gate maybe in this area, or maybe off of their access point here, if they'd love, you know, if Burton would allow that. Here's a good spot too, you know, to come in, uh, it's already kind of graded. So just wanna say that, you know, come in, you didn't do the fence on the north side, that's not gonna change, right? Update and update this fencing up on the north side, um, and and maybe over to the end here. It's it's really these two areas that we don't, that's the question, I understand.
Right.
Where.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, but I'm afraid that if we just do a gate here, while the cost for the gate itself is gonna be a good decent number. Um, and the fencing there, the design, the, um, you know, the the the. You're not getting those much bang for your buck.
Yeah.
There's still, you probably still have to go through all the bidding, so you will, um, all the paperwork and everything, so, you know, if I can, I'm suggesting a good, maybe maybe start from here, this corner, go over around the north side, back to the side here. Um, and then. You know, and that would make a pretty decent project, you know, and kind of, it it's really just maybe omitting this, uh.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, it's maybe in great form, because I was thinking that if if you only did the part by the turnbowl that you were talking about. Not sure that you can get, uh, the benefit that you desire. And so I think that's the balance to do, that I consider running that cost yourself to the rapids. Later, if you first, or is it made for?
Yeah.
That, this is not like one of the, right?
Fine, if if you were just invited for the turnbowl.
Well, I would.
But it is just like, I mean, that's giving more.
Okay, so.
Eighty percent of the airport fencing updated. I I do want to do a caveat as well, the FAA won't pay for a five foot fence. Um, they won't pay for an eight foot over life.
That's okay. Then what kind of fence will it pay for?
Um, I'm pretty sure I can give them the go with the chandelier.
Okay.
Um, but it should not be more than five foot tall.
That's okay. Now, one other thing, so looking at the south side, southeast side, where your cursor was. Well, go back, so we could do the fencing all along that south fence right there, even over to the road, basically, because if that property right there becomes accessible to the airport, it would be through the fence anyway.
Okay.
So we can just add a gate.
Yeah, so there would be a gate installed here.
Yeah, exactly, so we can just leave that fence clear over to the very edge of the road. And then the only section that we wouldn't do is south of the hangers, the general, maybe, yeah, that if we we might hold off until we figure out.
Would we want also to do this one here? I think he, or was he putting up fencing here?
Well, there's a couple property owners right there, right there, so there's there's two lots right there. I think they're ten acres, and they said they would be willing to work with the city to maybe give up a little property right there, and then and then, so.
Okay.
I would probably stop just north of where that, uh, ad looks, you know, the over to the right a little bit. Uh, over, yeah, right about there, yeah. But, I mean, that can be.
Right, then your fence right now is here, um, and it should be there.
Yeah.
Where where it is. Okay, now that gives me, I think, so the so the question really is, is do you guys wanna go forward with design, uh, this year on a fencing project in construction next year? Or do you wanna delay a year?
Hey, why delay when we can get it now? The the question is, is it, so we would be on the hook for the thirty six grand?
You. No, wait.
For the design?
You would be on the hook for, that, no, that's what the name of the reason, they would be, um, a weekly of a rough total of around sixty grand. That must kind of.
What do you guys think, Vince? What do you think?
For two thousand dollars? That's just for design though, right?
So, if we do want to do another subject, if you do go into, um, if we do an FAA funded project this year, and it's in this year of twenty four, uh, you will have to go out for selection, because we are technically out of our five year contract for FAA work. Um, which we knew about, but we were waiting to sort of the year, uh, sometimes we we wanna wait to go out for selection until we get the list of projects out of the M P U, out of the master plan, so that you know what the next five years are gonna really bring to the airport, or could bring to the airport, so you can go out for selection for all of those projects. You have two options here, you can, um, you know, we can wait to go out for selection till, um, you know, January or so, um, and get, um, we probably have a better idea of what that that twenty year list or the next five years is going to be, uh, for those projects, um, and go out for the full five years. The other option you can do is go out for a single project selection, um, or for a amended list, or, you know, say, maybe the the beacon, um, beacon and make one project and a fencing project together, um, you know, maybe separate projects, but, you know, but those are kind of the two, two paths that to go forward, um, with an FAA.
Yeah, how quickly did you did you start the design?
Uh, so the fund, the construction funding wouldn't come until next year, so we wouldn't actually bid the project, if we did, well, I wouldn't, it it's the last bid again. Um, the 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 project wouldn't actually get bid until twenty five, so so like February of twenty twenty five. We did do, the design would be kind of did next spring and summer, and then and fall, and be ready to go to bid. So there's plenty of time to go about, um, this FAA fencing project. The only question I have, I think, was to tell the FAA what you guys are gonna do for the next, for this fiscal year. The rest of it.
And then this, one thing to keep in mind though is, if we did do design early, the feds wouldn't reimburse them until we get bids for the construction, so we'd probably want to pull out on design for a while.
Yeah, and so that's absolutely right too, so I mean, that that could be something that, you know, you may need a contract to go into the design until late spring. And that would still give the engineer six months to put the design and bid together, um, and then, you know, you'd be. We need to get out and survey it anyways, or whoever's gonna do it, um, so I mean, that that also going in the winter, you know, we can squeeze everybody in. I mean, that might be just fine, so go ahead and push the actual fencing design, um, some experience.
And when you say the selection, are you talking about the engineering firm?
Yes.
So we have to select the, you know, and and when is that, when's the deadline for that, when do we need to do that by?
Um, you just need to go before you go into another FAA funded project contract.
So your contract expired?
Well, we we. These purposes, it has gone beyond the five years.
So we need to reestablish another five year contract with an engineering firm.
If you you can either do a five year, or you can do project by project.
But we have, do we have to do an R F Q for every project?
Um, you have to at least set it up some three potential vendors.
Engineers, right?
Or respondents.
Yeah, engineering firms, yes, we don't have to do that every time.
Yeah, so it's like like that, you, I think if you guys wait to do until the spring, which is a great time, I, to do the design itself and get under contract, that means you guys could go out for a selection this winter, that also gives Neil and I a little bit of time to really put that, I, uh, that twenty year project behind together, so that you can make a, again, the most benefit of your your dollars and do a full R F P for the full five years. Instead of just buying the project.
I think we need to just do the get the R F P out of the way, fill engineering firm ASAP, and then move forward with the project, especially given, and we have.
So Mayor, the the signal is that, uh, for the FAA purposes, the R F P has to list all of the the projects or potential projects that that someone would be working on in that five year period.
Okay.
Or they allow you to contract with that.
So do we wanna?
Yeah, I'm suggesting we wait until later, until until January, maybe at least, to go out for the, um, R F P, to send the R F P out. And give Neil and I some time to split your, you know, capital improvement.
That sounds great, yeah, and then we don't have to.
You'll have a third, uh, this for that. Your R F Q.
Right, cause right now.
You're getting this for this next.
Yeah. I like that, and then and then, once that's established, then we can work.
Then you follow along with the design. I'm pretty good with it, this is your first project.
Right.
Yeah, the point being, Mary, if if the project isn't on the R F P when you select an engineer, they can't do that project.
Got you.
The the FAA would make you go out for another R F P.
Right, okay, I got you there.
Cool.
Right, so, so, Mayor, me, and this, we sure, uh, understanding is, um, for, the purpose of this item on the agenda is to, um, update the the um, the airport catalog room and what, really what we're gonna go for, uh, what the airport wants to go forward with in twenty four, twenty five. Um, and it sounds like you're all on board for the fencing project, um, start that late spring, um, and for design, and have it ready for construction in twenty twenty five.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Everything else after that, that beacon, I think that's that's definitely one we wanna try to get done in the next five years if we can. You know, that'll be fine sitting there for the the five year C I P that we're gonna submit next month. Um, and and I think we just leave the apron expansion project on there for right now, might put on some, um, property acquisition as well. Just on the A S D I, A C I P now, we can move those projects around next year, af- again, after we get the C I P, uh, nailed down through the master plan process, um, but it really, we just need to nail down twenty four, twenty five right now, um, and the rest we can massage later. So we'll go over that, perfect, I love it, um. Happy to do that, and is also matching what I had submitted. Um, the, right now, we have on there right now is is to relocate that center connector, um, because it has direct access to the runway, and that's, um, unknown known now to the FAA, that's this guy right here. And so we're, they are showing that in the master plan, and the project should relocate this from this, and it comes this way, is that right, Neil?
Oh, okay.
Right, moving to the rest.
Yeah, so anyway, that was a bad item, if we're good, um, the other thing, actually, they the FAA and you know, are still figuring out their schedules, but they're gonna be offering those forty five minute online virtual meetings to talk about the A C I Ps and projects, et cetera. Um, which I'm gonna recommend when those come out, the the airport sign up for one of those, or have me sign up for them for one of those and join me on those, uh, one of those meetings in the next few weeks. Um, so when I do get information on that, I will forward that to Kirby, Colton, Mayor, anybody else wanna be in on that decision?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'll make sure that, you know, those three have that information that you guys can just make, um, and pay the time for that as well. Okay. Awesome, what's next? Position, Chuck.
Okay, are you still running the?
I'm still running, you want me to keep running it?
That's fine, just put it on the A L P, uh, preferred last last configuration, I'll plug for that.
That gets down for you, Jeff?
I don't want to see it.
Okay, this might be, he might have to screen share because I can switch it over, let's see what happens here. I can switch to the document view, but it might give us infinity screen, hold on.
Uh.
Okay, no problem. Hopefully you can see it now.
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty bad, you guys see it though, I have to be too.
You can zoom, zoom in also a little.
So it is full screen for you guys?
Well, it's almost, let me see, it's almost full screen, but I can see the speaker. There we go, that's a little bit bigger on.
It's not on full screen. Chuck, are you able to see most of it?
Uh, I'll look at mine, okay.
Okay.
So, I don't need to see it really, I know what's going on, but I think my understanding was that she, there was some interest in possibly pursuing the acquisition of this property early before someone develops it, or sells it, or, um, the the price of it. Uh, the the price of the value keeps continuing, continuing to go up. Hopefully receive federal funds for that. Purchase, and you you are able, as long as the the land acquisition is shown on the AOP. And that should be accomplished sometime like new, after January, January or so.
Yeah, we should be submitting the uh, the AOP to the FAA first quarter next year, okay.
Once it's on the AOP drawing, uh, you, and and then it's eligible for FAA funding. You could pursue purchase of the land acquisition ahead of the federal funding, let's say it's not going to happen for three or four years. Uh, you could go ahead and pursue purchase ahead of time. The one caveat is that you have to follow all of the federal requirements, and they are significant in purchasing the property. And I'll just run through it just briefly. Uh, one of them being that you have to update the, your exhibit A property map. And that would be done with those AOP drawings by Neil, so that that would be accomplished in uh, early next quarter. Uh, then, um, you would need, prob- the first thing that I'll probably want you to do is an environmental review. Uh, which is a, an assessment, typically an environmental assessment, which is between an environmental checkpoint and an EIS, it's kind of in the middle there. Uh, shouldn't take too much effort because it's buried around, but it would take an assessment. We estimate that would be somewhere around forty five thousand dollars uh, to accomplish. And then, once those, the environmental is cleared for the vacant property, then you would pursue the acquisition process. Um, there's surveys of the property acquisition, child searches. Uh, there's both an appraisal and an independent review appraisal that needs to be done. Those run about five to ten thousand dollars to accomplish. Then you need a negotiator, an approved negotiator to to negotiate the contract. At the same time, you also have to have what's called an environmental site assessment. To verify that there are no hazardous materials in the soils or in the ground. Uh, those have to be cleared, then negotiate the contract, and then get uh, approval from the FAA for just compensation to pay for it. And then, you would wait until you actually have uh, the federal funds in your capital improvement plan. And then you would get reimbursed at that point for the project.
There's one question, this is another one, you were talking about Mayor, is having to be on your match on projects.
Yes.
Yeah.
So through, you would pay everything upfront, then you would be reimbursed through your match on other projects by not having to actually put in a match.
Yes, but my point about all of this is that if it's going to be done with federal funds, it it's quite expensive compared to you just walking over and negotiating and purchasing. But the state payrolls too, so.
Will they reimburse us for, like, the appraisals and all the other?
All of, all of this stuff is federally reimbursed.
Yeah, ninety ninety point six three percent.
Yeah, it's required and reimbursed.
So technically, if we had a landowner that was willing to enter into a contract with this. To go through, I mean, it it's going to take months to get this down. But if if they're willing to hold that ground and enter in a contract where they'd save that for us and work with us through this process. Then if the land acquisition goes through, then ninety three percent of it's reimbursable.
Ninety point six three, plus the, if the state works the base, then it's ninety five.
Okay. I.
That is correct.
So the property, go back to your map.
Yep.
So that does change a little bit, so that on the right, on the east side, that, at least not where that building's at, but everything else. Um, has been on the market for close to two years now. And so, if we, I'm confident, that is the co-op in our community that owns all of that property. And we've had them in on the meetings, they're willing to participate with this to some degree. Um, I I know they would like to even sell it. I'll bet they would be willing to enter a long-term contract to allow us to go through that process if that's the direction we decide to go.
Very cool.
So, I can ask. And see what they would want to do there, and just tell them it's going to be a four-month process, probably.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the delays is the environmental and the appraisals, this is just seem to take forever these days.
Yeah.
I think it's looking longer than that, Mayor.
Yeah, it could be.
Well, maybe six months, what are you thinking?
Uh.
I'd say, I'd say at least six months.
Okay.
Yeah, and um.
Now, part of that is the appraisal, the the landowner's going to have to accept. The appraised value as compensation, right? Or we make up the difference, how does that work?
You could do that, but if they want more than fair market value, FAA is only going to reimburse for fair market value, which is the appraisal and review appraisal value.
Okay.
Right, and so more than that, or, you know, so that you would have to kind of present a bunch.
I see.
Well, I can imagine, I can't imagine them getting more than fair market value, but I suppose that's possible there, because they're not that willing to sell it.
Yeah, I just, I don't think they're in a hurry to sell, and that's why there's been no movement on those properties up to this point, is because they have them priced quite high. So I think for that chunk, I can't remember, Vince, have you, do you remember, how many lots that, maybe five? And they want like ninety thousand in a lot, and it's a acre and a half each one. I, no, there's at least four, I think. Maybe four, well, I was looking at two, I think there's at least, yeah, I think there's five at least, maybe six. So that could be like five hundred, another chunk, or, or even a little more.
Well, if they're, if they're considered commercial, they might benefit that possibly freezing.
Yeah, they, it's in the, I think right there's an industrial zone, but it's.
Yeah, this is certainly going to be more than residential or farming then.
Yes. I don't think they're way high, I just think they're thirty percent high probably.
Same.
I can visit with them and see what they would say, I can see what they say on that.
Yeah, we, we'd be ashamed to go through this whole process and then they not get a signal, because then you will get reimbursed.
Right. Exactly, so that's the thing, is we would have to, if we could get our attorney involved and have him drop the contract. After we verbally negotiate with them, that they're willing to wait six plus months. Um, you know, and just explain that in the process we have to, can you email that to us, Chuck?
Um, is it tough to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
So that's in the packet as well, it's in the.
It's in the package.
Okay, so, all right, sorry, I didn't leave my packet.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you could always go through condemnation if they were.
Yeah.
It's just saying.
Okay. But you still have to compensate in that point, it's just.
It's still all it's going to be, the law sees as fair market value, even if your appraisals and review appraisals are right. They're not going to be any more than that, even in condemnation.
Got you, okay. Sounds good, well, I I can work on that, I'll work the strat on that one.
Okay, well, I just, that's.
But you're, you might want, so I think you're going to be, you know, six, six months is the minimum, probably. I think you're going to want a little more, a little longer term, like it might get to a year.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to make sure.
What do you know the FAA operates and the environmental process that has to go through?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
And and we need to get the AOP into the FAA and.
Yeah.
Everything, so that'll be the first quarter, so there's three months, right, three to four months.
Yeah, I think you're, you're probably looking at, you know, maybe like in the next year, or, you know. Getting that approved.
Okay.
But the re- reimbursement, you know, that may not come until twenty six, twenty five or twenty six, you know, later in fiscal, in twenty five. Uh, possibly not until twenty six, just.
Yeah, except, except there is, what, once it's done. There is the possibility of discretionary funds or other statewide funds that could come from that, which is if they're looking for a pro- purchase, they're complete.
We, well, we've been hearing, um, and Neil, you might do, backing up on this, or or, tell me if if you heard differently. Is uh, all money's going towards runways, um, state enforcement discretionary right now, and so it's. We're seeing, and and all the discretionary and state enforcement is a program through twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty right now.
Yeah, eighty eight percent.
Yeah, that's the first of stuff, I just don't really have, but I want to temper everybody's expectations and, you know. But Chuck, there could be, there's, um, there could be a chance that that they come to the data of, you know, in August and say, oh, we have this project fall free. When we need to spend too many dollars before the end of September, or get it under grant. Are you guys ready? And you can say, yeah, we're ready. We've got our review of appraisals, we've got all of the things in in order, and we were just waiting on money. So that that is also a question, but I just want to make sure it's, you know, we're not banking on that.
Yeah.
I I'm, I tend to be risk averse, so. If you have my hopes up unless it's going to be shorting.
Well, I I think I would, I think it's a wise thing to do though, because I look at it from the other perspective. Uh, if they sell it to somebody tomorrow, and they start developing, the cost, the cost just went up, yeah. You may never be able to get it. At a reasonable cost, so while it's big a land is your best opportunity um, to secure it. Down the road, it's just going to be more expensive and more difficult to get.
Yeah, I agree, and maybe. Now that we understand the process a little bit, it might be worth having a conversation with the property owner on the west side as well, and just seeing if we can. Because he was wanting more. His. Than we thought was reasonable, but if he's willing to go through the same process, then.
It's an option of an option. You pay him five grand or something and say, just, just hold your.
Get the first round of refusal.
For one year period or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A right, a right of refusal, the, the easiest thing to, at least you get something for a period of.
Right. Okay, we'll work, we'll work on a few of those things then. I think that. For us to.
We just have one, it's, it's. I'd admit it is on my. Using federal funds, that's all we get that property. To uh, to need all of your investments to be used for. Merry use, the aviation. Uh, other commercial vendors.
So question on that then, Neil, on, um, does parking qualify as aviation related?
If you're parking for your hangar.
Okay, what about the, any, um, like, a hotel or a convenience store or something like that? Would that be aviation related?
That is an idea or or sell, yeah.
Yeah, so that that, you know, just just keep that in mind. You know, as long as it's attached to the airport or bought with their, with the FAA funding, it needs to be used for aviation related uses. So like hangars, parking, marines.
Hotels.
And it can be businesses, it has to be aviation related business.
Yeah. So, aviatic shops, paint shops.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Ingenova.
Anywhere, offices, and parking, and customer, you know, in customer sides. Where they come in and, you know, do all the business on the, on the land side in the building, and then have a hangar in the back, or or shelves, or whatever they're doing in the back with.
Yeah.
Paint booths or aviatic.
They would be, they would be leased properties.
Yeah, they do lease them.
Okay. Well. I'll have a conversation with, have a conversation with those two property owners and see. Um. Where we're at with that, and then we'll know which way to proceed.
Very good.
Awesome. Excellent. There. Okay. So we're ready to move on to the next item then?
Yep.
Which is, um, so Mayor, we talked a little bit in a bus tech meeting, um, you know, they have that revitalization grant.
Yeah.
Um, available, so Chuck, it'll be getting into that a little bit, so that's what this item's about.
Yeah, sorry, Chuck, I saw your email and I forgot to respond, I apologize.
I know. Well, this.
That's, that's how we got around it, Mayor.
This works out just great. Yeah, the, the uh, aviation resources grant, they have up to a hundred thousand dollars each year that is available. Typically, they like to share that with about three or four projects, so they probably have to twenty five to thirty thousand dollars with a ten percent match. Uh, the max grants are due on April first, and it's a real, it's a real simple application, uh, it's done online. And um. It, I think you'd be in good shape to get that amount of money. Um, my biggest concern is, what exactly do you want to do? With the pack of lives renovation, and defining what those costs are likely to be. And we, we may want to get an architect up there to kind of just do a preliminary estimate for you, so we know, I'm going to need a grant application. Whether it's for this one or even another possibility. Uh, which certainly is, uh, the renovation revitalization fund is out there too, as well is a possibility. Your guys are familiar, very familiar with that. There's a few other um. Uh, available funding opportunities out there within the state that we could consider. But I think it's critical that you define what it is you want to do with the renovation, exactly what that is, and get an architect's estimate. For what those costs will be before we start putting applications in.
Yeah, and I've got a, so I've taken some pictures from a few other airports around the state. That I think would be good, but I think, uh, what we could do is. Do you know a cheap architect? Here's, here's the thing that I've seen with architects, they come, they come in and know, they'll draw it, but then you still have to have it engineered, or you still have to have it. And it's not even that it needs to be engineered, you guys could probably look it over and and make sure, I guess. Um. But well, what I'm saying is an architect can give you a visual of what it's going to look like, but that we're going to have to have something that we can give to a contract. To get an idea of what that's going to cost. You know what I mean?
Right.
Well, I think, I think an architect could give you a rough idea, probably better than we could.
Yeah.
What the estimated cost might be.
Okay.
And and the, the two architects that we worked with, um, you know, for hangars, for hangar designs, they they do the entire building, inside and outside. They give the interior as well, so I mean, they're, they're not just, you know, drawing you a free picture. Um, and they have the staff, you know, they they hire the staff that they need, or they, the other disciplines, if they need a mechanical, electrical. Uh, person, they'll hire them on their staff to, you know, do the design, so they, they'll, they will give a, they'll choose weeks, but they will give you a complete package.
How much do you think that would cost, and and if we do that, my thought would be, the exterior. We would want one paint, and then we have those wood. Well, those beams, the metal beams that are kind of encased in wood right now, it's just not very aesthetically pleasing. So the front, there's a desire to not only do the inside of the lounge, but actually paint and do the exterior, make it look nice also. And so I'm wondering if, if we hired an architect, if it's going to be kind of expensive. Having to do the interior and exterior, and then face the project in, if it's way too expensive, face it in, you know, phase one, phase two. Maybe you have phase three.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think, why don't we do a little bit of research and see if we can find an architect up there that's willing to. Put a little bit of effort into this without spending a ton of money and give us some budget numbers uh, for both the exterior and the interior. Um, let's see if we can find somebody. Um, let's see if we can find somebody, okay?
Okay, that's perfect. And then help me understand the unification revitalit- revitalization fund, maybe somebody's, ever you benefited from that in the past?
I would imagine that you have, yes.
Is that, are you familiar with Sunshine?
I have never been involved.
I think that's one of those things our county tries to take advantage of and our, the cities don't get the benefit.
But, but there's no reason why you shouldn't, no.
Perfect.
Well, what we can't, what we are, are any of them are determined right now is when the grant applications are due, because they've got two or three board members that are vacant right now and they're trying, they're sort of putting in a hole until they do those, the board back up to the minimum number. So, um, it's a little up in the air at the moment. They have a lot of money and, yeah, the county tends to spend it because they sort of are the main player, but it's for the, for communities as well.
Okay. I think that's one of those, we got told, and I'll have to, if, I'll have to go back and, and make sure I, I remember correctly, but we got told, don't apply individually for that, we want to make sure that these projects are county-wide. I don't know, it, I think that may be the one, it might be something else, but I think that may be the one that we were told by our commissioners, that they didn't want us going rogue asking for money. But I, we haven't gotten a lot of help from our commissioners, so I'm not real concerned. If we need to go forward with it, we go forward.
Yeah. And then, like I said, our, our, uh, grant specialist is, is on vacation right now, but, um, she did identify a couple of other state programs that might fit into this, and I think it really depends on, we need to know what we're wanting to do and how much cost, and then she can isolate that or which grant opportunities those might be.
Sure, well, let's, yeah, see if we can find an architect and then how much it'll cost and we can run that, I think, the sooner the better. We, that, hangar is looking, I don't know if you've been in the inside of that since we've done it, but it's nine day.
Yeah, that's great, I mean, it's awesome.
Yeah, so now we just want to finish it up and, and be done with that project, so.
And I recall that you did the roof on the, on the lounge at the same time, right, so the roof's okay.
We did the, yes, the actual roof, they, they plugged all the holes, they figured, they brought it up to, it's not completely redone like the other one, but they did fix anything in that, yes.
Okay, they did recover.
Something.
I, I think one question is.
They just replaced the main hangar roof and then did some patch repairs on the pilot lounge.
Correct. And made sure.
So, it would, it would be helpful for you guys to be thinking about what it is you want to be doing with the pilot lounge, like, like the, the things you mentioned on the exterior, uh, and also in the interior, so when we do get an architect, they know what they're looking for.
Yeah, and I, I have a vision for it, but it's a personal one, and so we have to talk with the rest of the, the group and just make sure we all agree on, on what we like to see in there, so.
That, that, that's, make sure to, as you're reading about the interior, are you doing it just in the front area or the office in the back?
Yeah.
Uh, department area in the back, um, the bathrooms, you know, upper dated fixtures in there, that sort of thing. So, I mean, just, I, I, you know, kind of starting, um, putting together a prioritized kind of list of, we want this phase done, and this is kind of what we're thinking in this phase, or, you know, some of the minimum stuff, and then an architect can help guide you a little further on that.
Yeah, we're, I'm, I'm thinking the whole thing like the, the south end of it, where you're working is, that would be a lounge area where they could actually go, you know, there may be somewhere to rest, but.
There's a shower back there, showers.
Yeah, nightstand couches.
Like that.
Right, and then the lobby area would just make, stay a lobby area, you know, for the most part. Um, I've talked to Kirby about, you know, the office area, rerouting our AWAS equipment into the office, instead of being the main area, and a few other things, so. Yeah, we've got a pretty good idea, we'll have to, but yeah, the sooner we can get an architect on, we can get that designed as a group, I think that'd be great.
Very good.
Perfect, awesome, I like it. Great. Perfect, thank you. Uh, so this is the contracts for the UDOT-funded pavement preservation products that they brought up a little bit ago, more details on that though. And it's funded ninety percent by UDOT and then, uh, ten percent for, uh, by, 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 there's. Um, and this is just one of the design things, uh, no, this is the design, this is just the engineering side of things. Uh, so this is one thing, it's from design bidding and construction, so the whole package, uh, on the engineering side, and then construction would be a separate contract, that's per normal. Um, and then what we're looking at during, is, uh, the, the four-year, we deserve, um, all the, the airports in the state are on a four-year cycle for pavement preservation. In twenty twenty, um, because we have just built, rebuilt the runway and built the new taxiway, uh, those payments were not eligible for, for the seal coating at that time, because they were too new, so we just did an apron. Um, so if you recall, we, we, uh, that's why it's a block in this section. Um, so what, the proposal for this would be to crack seal, seal coat, and a three mark, all of the air, airside payments. So the runway taxiway, connectors, the run-ups, and the apron area.
Mm-hmm. Sounds good.
Okay, what I look forward to, is that, are you guys, uh, um, prepared to, you know, perhaps go to the city council for review of approval there, and get us going?
Yeah, better than one.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, this one, I do want, I, I do want to put out for bid, uh, by the end of January, um, so this is a project we can turn around pretty quickly on the design side and get out to bid by the end of January. I want to be on the front of, um, all of the pavement maintenance projects this year. Um, the contractors last year got really busy really fast, uh, with their quotes and their, their bids and everything, and so, uh, ready or didn't, I didn't price this though. So, that's why I'm kind of wanting to get going, get started, um, on this guy.
And we got pushed into October for some of it, which is a question.
Yeah, we just did one last week and it wasn't fun.
Okay, I'll, I'll take the motion for the, go to the city council.
I'll second it. On favor, yeah.
Uh, right, so when would the actual crack ceiling happen? And it, what's, what is our percentage for that?
Yeah, it would be the same, ten percent.
Ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
And like, sometime next summer, you know?
Here's one, here's one thing that I'm, that I'm seeing really quickly that we need to make sure, we'll have to check our budget, but if we fly ahead and budget for the airport, you know, we have a little bit of funds, Kirby was telling me, we have some funds for renovation of the main hangar, but some of these other projects I'm looking at, you know, I know it's not that much, it's about sixty-seven hundred dollars, for this other project, not a big deal, just for us to think about, and one thing that we need, make sure that we do as a council, is set aside a possible budget of like a hundred thousand dollars, whether we use it or not for the airport, for these types of projects and match funding for that, just so that we don't have to open a budget every time we get budget, that more, I'm happy to see that as a.
So Mayor, I do want to mention that I had included this project in your budget last year, last spring, when I sent my budget updates to Ron, uh, Sunshine and Kirby.
You're really awesome.
And that got into your twenty-four budget, and it should be already there.
I think you make a great point there, because you need to be ready to take any, any old grants that might be an opportunity.
Exactly, and we want to have that money available and not have to amend the budget and things like that, but just to make those decisions, so. That's something we'll consider as well, definitely, thank you for doing that, Kimberly, and I'll watch that a little closer moving forward, but we might have that number just a little bit too, so that as things come available, um, then we, then we, we're ahead of the game.
Oh, absolutely.
Am I just crazy or did we skip the MPU project updates?
Oh, one other question.
I'm just wondering, I, I, I might have zoned out, but I thought that we skipped the MPU project updates that Neil was gonna do. Item D.
Uh, oh, I, I'm just rolling through the thing here, so.
Well, that was not, uh, I didn't have that when the original packet was sent out, so we didn't make it to that, but on the packet that I have up, we, we do have that, if you'd like me to pull that up.
Oh, I, I, well, wait, I'll just pull up, um.
Why are you picking on this? I mean, it's always after dogs and garbage.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, Neil.
Quick question, um, before we move too far past the architect, the grants, everything, so the match funding for those grants, can that, can that architect, uh, design and things like that be like kind or used towards the grant funding if we were to end up doing that project? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure.
It'll depend on the grant.
Okay, like that, uh, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar grant that we're gonna have to have some match funding for, ten percent for, will the architect work count as a, a match?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it probably could, um, yeah.
Perfect, okay, just want to make, just want to check on that.
Yeah, that, I, I had to talk with you about, last week about that, that specific grant, they did mention they write the grant as a ten percent match, and so that when you get the funds, that's what you're gonna see. Um, but typically the airports are putting in a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Uh, because construction, you know, twenty-five thousand actually doesn't go that far.
Right.
Um, and, and I, I think it's possible to not actually have to put any of the match to it, but at the same time, I think, um, they, they want, part of the, the qualifications is they want to see that you guys are putting your own money into this project as well.
Sure.
That you're not just asking for money for free. They, they want to know that you're invested and the city's invested in, in this renovation as well.
Sure.
So, yeah, I, the point, but, but, you know, I mean, very, I don't for that, you know, extra stuff like that you were just talking about, for the budget for these, these items that come up.
Yes.
All right. Okay, Neil?
Well, we talked a little bit about the, uh, with, off the acquisition, and so there's, uh, a lot of work going on with that right now. We are, um, kind of wrapping up that portion of the project. And so for the board, be aware of, and hopefully this isn't new news to anybody.
Mm-hmm.
We will be, uh, we will be out there next week. Our intention is to present to city council next Tuesday evening in conjunction with, we're also going, going to hold a little open house, hopefully just right there, kind of in the, in the hallway outside of council chambers, for about an hour, hour and a half before council starts. Uh, we've been trying to get the message out to all of the city, so we've talked to the, the technical industry committee and a few other folks who would be interested in that. Uh, we've, we've given some material of Sunshine to post on social media, courtesy website, or whatever, whatever vehicle it's you want to use. Per our scope of work, uh, when we discuss this, you know, during stoking of this project, advertisement for this endeavor, uh, was to be, there's the city's responsibility in, in terms of the channels that we're used to with emails and contacts, to those that we have a connection with already, but to reach a wider audience, it's completely up to, as much effort as you guys take there on that.
Facebook.
Yeah, it's on Facebook as well, I was just about to pull that up.
Yeah, Facebook's wonderful, if you have a city, uh, digital newsletter that goes out, maybe the timing's just not great, but whatever, whatever you want to do to kind of get the word out, we will, we'll present that referral alternative. Um, on the referral alternative, I don't know if it's still in the, on the screen here, but just for everybody's sake, in this group, if there are any comments, suggestions, thoughts about this, please don't hesitate to disclose to us, this is what we will present to city council. And we'll have it up on, on the larger display boards for anyone who wants to come in and discuss this on Tuesday. Means is this the, the final deal? So if you have suggestions or, or thoughts, please, uh, please go ahead. It'll be, the easiest thing to do is to take a marker and just scribble on this and take a photo with your phone and text it back to me or Kim, or email it back to me or Kim. Uh, we'll gladly take those and then, uh, see what we can do about, uh, figure out, take the changes if needed. Um, one comment, in addition, the property acquisition was a big deal, that's only three, three minutes, pretty well. One other comment I would just offer here in a general sense, uh, we've, we've shown a fairly aggressive uh, plan in terms of hangar development. And, uh, and there, there are pros and cons, you know, the, the, the pros, yeah, we're really setting ourselves like for the future. Um, there's all that is, you, you know, will develop, and keep that, and will happen, like it will some of the screen. Um, that doesn't matter quite so much, other than, we were just reiterate to you, and some of you will know this because you were involved in our last act meeting, uh, we worked hard to get these hangars set up, so that you weren't going to have any west-facing hangar doors. That was a concern with the wind down there, and that's the degree and that sort of thing.
So, you know.
Those minimize as our west-facing. Uh, that is much impossible, so that's the intention and the reason for the layout you see. Uh, let's see, other than that, the other thing I would bring up is, once we, the city council, take any comments or suggestions from them, anything from the public, we will finalize this document, and this will be our prescription for developing a list of projects that you have to talk to the public for. We've tried to come up with about twenty years' worth of projects. And then we will refine that into a short intermediate and long-term plan. And that short, intermediate, and long-term concept will be the primary point of discussion in our next, the next, and final technical, uh, meeting. Uh, that, then it's turned into the ALB that we're hoping to, uh, I think it's at thirty twenty-four, and then we'll be ready to, and that's just. We'll get final approval from the city, we'll do so at that time. But that's kind of where we are and what it looks like, any thoughts or questions or anything that you want to bring up at this point, guys?
Yeah, so Neil, I like what you said about how ambitious that is, and so what I would recommend, um, would it be appropriate on that plan to, for example, the T-hangers to the West, the first set, where they're interrupted, maybe draw a line that says phase one, and then east of the, the ones to the east, draw another line that says phase two, just so we're, and then identify, you know, for the next five years, we're working on phase one, for the next ten years, we're looking at phase two, and so.
Yeah.
We, we kind of have an idea of, hey, this is where we're supposed to be going in ten years, as opposed to having that big picture and going, wow, that's a lot.
Wonderful comment, we can do that now, that's really the intention of the phase development that I was mentioning before. So when we get to the final depiction, it will be exactly that. It will be, we, and we, you know, we've used a couple of colors, and so one color will be our five-year term, another color will be the ten-year, and then, and then the everything beyond ten years, so we will definitely get to that point.
And what I like, uh, what I was, you know, just thinking as Vince was saying that, on the east side, we have more area to work with, we could actually do the T-hangers, uh, be phase one, and then if we need more, because I'm looking, there's people that are wanting hangars phase two, that would be easy to develop south of that and, and that hangar area and be that phase one, phase two, and then as we work things out on the west side, because then that would also tie in our color popper pads eventually as well. So all of that can be built out without having to acquire any extra property. Where on the east, west side, you know.
So maybe the taxiways, phase one, and then the T-hangers inside the taxiways, two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Really, really, that, I mean, perfect idea, because really what, what you can offer as an airport and as a city is to support the taxi lanes and. is to support the taxi lanes and then allocate the, the spaces, if you will, for those ground pieces, and someone would create at least a ramp and instruct the, uh, instruct the painters, either for their own use or to, or to sublet or to manage the, you know, T-hanger situation.
I think by phase nine or ten should be that yellow spot in between the ramp and the, yeah, right there, but that should be the, that'd be the last thing we do.
Last, Jerry.
Swap those two then.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, yeah, he likes to, just put a guard in there.
A guard?
Uh, I've been told freebies.
Camping, camping.
Camping property. You have some of those, uh, free groups, they did, they're all over.
Yeah.
I, I do feel like it is the word I mentioned on the T-hanger taxi lanes, um, projects, that the FAA is very committed on, like, like I did earlier, that state of portion within our discretionary funding. Um, they pretty much have told us that unless it's a runway, you're not gonna get it. Um, so that means the only funding available for taxi lanes is your non-primary entitlement, about hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. You can only save up to four years of that, like six hundred thousand dollars, and it doesn't go very far. Um, one, uh, thing that I've been thinking about and you guys might wanna think about too, and it really varies there for the airport situation, situation though, is seeing, you know, if, uh, like Mary, you were saying, you know, a little extra cash in the airport fund. Um, but, but, you know, are your lease rates, um, you know, sufficient to put back into the airport and to help support these taxi lanes and extension of these taxi lanes? Um, you know, is it, you know, is there a way to increase maybe the, the square footage, you know, and lease rates, or, you know, a combination of things, it's gonna have to get a little bit more creative. Another thing is, um, if you had a developer that wants to develop like the T-hanger taxi lane, or the, the T-hangers, or do like a whole bunch of them, are they willing to put in, um, the, the, the ground or, or the, the taxi lanes as part of their, you know?
Yeah. Quick question on that, so let's say we do figure a way to finance, whether it's, you know, through our a hundred fifty thousand a year and, you know, city kicking in, what is the maintenance about, what, do we get funding to maintain those once they're there?
Certainly, certainly, the priorities kind of the same, it's just the same.
Yeah.
Uh, maintenance, maintenance funds go to your runway, airline taxiway, and then maybe your primary apron, beyond that, funding for maintenance, give a little package of taxi lanes.
Especially if it's not built FAA standards, then it looks like that it wants a harness for maintenance. So, so that, and often too, so, you know, if you wanted to self-fund, um, this yellow apron here, you wouldn't necessarily have to do it to the FAA standards, um, but that means you're probably gonna be on the hook to possibly change it.
Yeah.
Um, do the crack seal and seal coating and all of that.
In my mind, that's really, I don't know, that, that one needs to be done fairly soon, and not even because Colton's sitting in the room, but it's, it opens it up for more parking, but, yeah, I mean, we're gaining what, five, it's like five spaces, more for planes, but
Yeah.
I don't know, so
But you're, you're also, you know, tying this up so that it's not, you know, much of rocks and
Exactly.
You know, falling into aircraftages.
Question on that.
Yeah, you guys, you're like
I was just gonna say, does that be, that, does that become part of the main ramp area, considered part of the main ramp?
If you build it to that base standard, it surely would.
Okay.
Absolutely. But, you know, some of these down here, these taxi lanes, you know, I've seen some, some folks build those taxi lanes with local standards, whatever the street design standards are, um, in Texas, and, and they, you know, they've done, they've lasted twenty years for sure.
Yeah.
But, you know, they, they just have a question, your ma, your maintenance budget might go up.
Sure.
Your seal code is incredibly
And that's good to know, that, that was my
Yeah, so if you wanna keep that consideration as you're reviewing lease rates, for sure.
We don't wanna overbuild, that's for sure.
Right, overbuild, Peter, what you're saying about phasing is absolutely right, and that's something that we will be working out. So the numbers on the screen for the different projects are not necessarily prioritized yet. There's just all the, the variety of different things that we've identified so far that need to be done. And, uh, and so, once, once we're all in agreement that this is kind of the general looking field, what the future's supposed to be, then that, that is exactly the next step when we get together to begin this attack, this second round. Which of these taxi lanes do you want first, and where do we want to pay funding in five years, ten years, and then the, the tenth, the twelfth year beyond
Yeah.
applications. So is it that little apron, is that the top thing, or is it some taxi lanes for, where, uh, T-hangers could go? Is it adjusting the fuel farm, you know, which of those things is, is the highest priority?
That, that's what we need to
Right, so, I love, I love your comments. We need to land a contact at the beginning of the year, and then we'll take information from that and align the, that short intermediate, long-term plan, and then that gets reflected into the ALP set, and we'll produce the final ALP set, thirty twenty-four, and get it on the state FAA for your casing and my review.
Perfect. I think, design.
Anything else yet?
So I do have an idea, um, on what our number one taxi rate could be, that would be best for just the one that would be right in front of your hanger, right there.
And then the
Just straight, straight through, and then up to the other taxi way, then you get T-hangers on the north, and you get open up fifty-five, fifty's on the south.
And then the T guys, and all those, I think, just stick there. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's bad, I don't think most people care, because they got places to work.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking too, exactly, bringing up a big old lot.
And you have two options.
But, yeah. And even if you didn't even do that yellow part, you just did a section to get to it, right, I guess? It still goes in taxiways, you know?
Yeah, they're You're picking up what we're putting down.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. You, you know, you would really want, we only extend however far this first developer wants to go on this T-hanger, or whoever's gonna construct this T-hanger.
Yeah.
And, and these are, these are generic boxes, by the way, for the T-hangers, they can be much longer. They don't, it actually, that, um, they gave that, we just pick these six unit boxes as a placeholder, and, and another, you know, and you've mentioned it before, that, you know, all the hangers signs, locations, organizations, places, those are just generic placeholders, you know?
Yeah.
To show, we're having a hanger development project here. Um, it may look a little differently when it actually goes in. You know, they, sometimes putting a twelve unit box, you go all the way out here, and, you know, certainly do it.
Yeah.
But to the shop.
And certainly do that at the decision and discretion of board approval.
Yes.
Right.
And then they won't care for the showing of the hanger development, they know that hanger developments are squishy, if you will, on these. Right.
Cool. Like this
Yeah, somebody said they wanna put in some box hangers that are here instead of the T-hangers, great, we're getting box hangers. And that, and that would actually simplify, you're going, neither have the lunchbox and then fifty good box hangers.
Right.
But you're only gonna get two instead of getting a spot for six hangers, you know, in the same area.
Yeah. And I think, well, and that, that's, that's topic for another day, but maybe Roosevelt City invests in some T-hangers and rent them out.
Maybe it's more a thing for the city because it's just, it's better, we start getting a better income. They're just figuring that, if you had six, you know, that's about twenty thousand dollars a year in that, that would be much.
All right.
You'll be able to have lights and just, yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Cool. Ready to, anything you need to turn now?
No, just, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
See you later.
Okay. Was it Kirby, I think you're
Yeah, I just wanted everybody to just review and see our inspection. Did you get the email, you and, uh, Neil Kimberly that I sent you?
Yeah.
Ordered that to you, so it's just something for you guys to look over and, and review.
Yeah, how do we get those copies working on twenty-five? And the rails?
Yeah, you love this stuff.
I can, I can, I can, all day. Two, three
I know, I know you guys are not working on like trying to get electricity before.
Before I try. Yeah, we've tried, right now, I'm trying to mention the tanks in the, in the room. So, Bob used to do, he, he works on the airport there.
Okay.
I contacted him just recently, and he
Okay.
I haven't, we haven't worked on it very vigorously, right, Clyde, for months.
I'm just, the lights, well, we know it's the board on the back, but the end lights, there's like
You do have electricity there, then?
There's like, well, that's why I don't know, but then, then light.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, but them lights, there's like, there's like fifty lights on that little thing, like, they're that big, and they're just aiming everywhere, it's like, okay, did they all burn out?
No.
Can you replace them one at a time? Because they have four shoes on each light, it's like, okay, unreplaceable. We need to see if there's electricity.
They all wouldn't have burned out, all four lights?
Because I checked the, I checked
I don't either, I mean, they're these.
Yeah.
So is there breakers?
There's a breaker, and I checked the breakers, and, but I haven't checked for power, but
Well, I can go
I need to get a little bit more time to do that.
I can go check it out.
If you wanna yell.
I didn't pay any, I
That's a, that's an easy check.
That's
This is, this is faulty.
That's not the same.
Yeah, if you want to go out there, one day, I'll go out there. That's true, too.
Yeah, let's go try it.
Just a light there, should touch it. We've seen if there's power.
For a hundred and twenty both? I was just gonna say, no meter, or some type of
Yeah, I got, oh, here, so, so take a look at.
Sorry.
I just, yeah.
So that's, that's about all I had on that, guys, it's just, it's ready, just for everybody to review and look at, this is why I brought it up.
Yeah, so, just the good things, you know, the, you know, the, the rail assemblies are very frustrating, I think.
Yes.
You know, and the fact that the ski won't come back, which is also very frustrating.
Yeah.
Everyone use them again.
Yeah, right, recommended too, um.
Hell, wow, so, oh, yeah.
That's great, it's one, not required at your airport.
Right, it was just recommended is what he said.
I don't think you have paint holders. I mean, yeah, of course.
Gotcha.
But it's more paint, and more paint you're gonna be painting.
Right.
Uh, the tire road's not creating, right, it's right with the, that's the only other runway, Kirby?
Yeah, and it's been taken care of.
Yeah.
That's, no.
He said he had to find something.
He actually said that to us, I have to find something.
It is. Say it, because it's three inches.
Yeah, and he said one inch, and I was like, wow, that's pretty strict.
Yeah, meant to blow that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, just more of an issue of, you know, handwriting, bringing up the there might be a little
It was just like the picture on the, uh, light rail. He said there's a runway and identifiers, a light rail in there someplace.
The rail?
Yeah, so he had to, he had to get at a certain angle and get low, just to make it look bad, it's, you know, it was
Yeah, I thought, I thought this thing buried it. Well, it's gotta be here, and you had to walk aside and take a picture.
Yeah.
So do you guys pull these up here?
Yeah, we have it on today.
Maybe, even if you really wanna do that forward out there, um
I like the game channels, what's the matter with that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna check up on your Tesla drivers.
Exactly, I know. He was, when he stayed on there about being implying that those
They can't be hired in the
They can't, yes.
Oh, man, he's just looking for things to gain you guys on.
There you go, that's, he admitted it, he admitted that.
Yeah, he was, yeah.
Keep up the work, you know, you're in good shape, perfect.
Yep. You can call Mary Clyde or the fuel system, which is nice.
They work fine.
They fine.
Oh, look, you got it full, Clyde.
See? But overall, yeah, it's, it's, actually, it's in good shape, like I said, he
I can three hours.
Yeah, so to get it, and we had to start it, Clyde, and Justin, you know, we're wanting to turn over, and they have a truck, and I had to say, well, batteries were new. So, we're gonna get a set, next, hopefully next week, Justin's not, that's big time.
So it's
And he'll go, yeah, well, and he planned to get this, you know, so we could actually pay for it. And so that was how, he just, he's, he's a busy man, very young. Yeah, so everything where you can move, yeah.
Okay, I think this is the life of the main thing, yeah.
Yeah, it is, and like I said, call Hank, some of the moms, who, who says, he works on Merle's Airport, so he's familiar with it. And that's what I'd rather have, someone familiar with what we're doing.
And on, um, Kirby, on this stuff for the, the, did you send?
Yes.
Did he say he was gonna update any of the orders or something?
I believe he said he would, and I remember that with Colton, like, we both did.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's
Yeah.
It, it is just clarify, but would you guys can
He said he was gonna
Update that part of it, the marks and change?
Can you scroll up again? One more? Cut them off. Yeah, what is this? Oh, okay, never mind.
Well, I think it was fine.
Uh-huh, I would like, what the H?
No, no, it's right here.
Okay, it's the same, no.
It's a big machine.
Pictures of what?
It, it's a big, from the bird.
Yes.
Anyway, there are the weed, so.
See, in the brush.
Hey, yeah.
Okay, um, uh, so Uh, this is just a note for the inspection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He also said
Yeah, this
Side, calling their, less the door on that. He said, you might want to paint that, the kids will get eventually, brush through that, and, I mean, he's just looking for
The human door?
Yeah.
The man door?
Yeah, the man door, it's like, what, okay.
I can't believe you guys left the rest behind in the runway, ridiculous. Revere to
He said a lot of them, that's nice.
Hey, buddy, buddy, did the weeds?
Turned around.
So, so, oh, but the S, that one inch thing is that the AC, the, the designing C, the maintenance requires an inch and a half drop from three to an inch to ground. The rule's more than an inch and a half, and it's plus or minus a half an inch, I'll look at it today. Design, yes. One and a half inch or plus or minus a half.
That's hilarious.
That, Randy.
Well.
Something else, no.
We better get a quarter inch on there.
Do you know that manual?
Yes.
You're right, you have to, oh, that.
Yeah, he went on the backside on, but I chopped him, so it's
I just want somebody who wants to do a year's one.
So we can do a drag strip.